We'll go ahead and call to order the meeting of the Planning and Zoning Board on May 9, 2019. Patsy, roll call.
Yes, ma'am. Don Price?
Present.
Lamar Russell?
Here.
Mary Pearson?
Here.
Melissa Bass?
Here.
Penny Zerker?
Here.
Tonight's meeting is a work session for the board to gain knowledge and information regarding the non-- excuse me, the non-conforming commercial rezoning project. There will be dialogue between the board and staff as we learn about this project. We will have public comment beginning with. If anyone has any public comments on any subject that they would like to present, please get a card out front and provide it to Patsy, and we'll be happy to hear public comments. The Planning and Zoning Board will allow public comment on any item on the agenda at the time each agenda item is considered by the board, with the exception of the ministerial items, that is approval of agenda minutes, informational items, and ceremonial proclamations, emergency items, and other items for which there is no opportunity to be heard as provided in Section 286-0114-3 of the Florida statutes. Quasi-judicial items shall require public hearing and public comments and will be accepted at the time of the hearing is opened. The Planning and Zoning Board ordinarily will not take any official action under Reports and Open Discussion section of the agenda, and accordingly, public comment on these items will not ordinarily be accepted. Should any official action be deemed necessary on an item under Reports and discussion-- open discussion or an item added to the agenda during the meeting, public comment will either be accepted prior to official action being taken or will be accepted when the item is placed on a future agenda for further consideration. The board may limit citizens' comments to three minutes if a large number of citizens are present to comment, except when additional time is required to afford due process for quasi-judicial items. Tonight is not a quasi-judicial item. That will come at our next meeting, where we will be hearing the information formally in a quasi-judicial manner. Patsy, do we have any comments? In that case, we will go ahead.
Any public comments?
Oh, yeah. Yes.
There's a couple fillings cards out.
Well, we'll do old bus-- see if there's anyone has any old business. We don't have anything on the agenda. Do we-- anyone have any old business? Okay. Well, we will hold for a minute then. All right, our first speaker will be Mark James.
Thank you. I live on Oak Lane, and I wanted to address the proposed rezoning of the area surrounding Oak Lane. My first comment, though, would be on the R2 zoning-- I mean, I'm sorry, R1 zoning for the Oakwoods subdivision. I believe that has currently zoned R1 and is proposed to remain that way. And I would just like to point out that if I'm reading the code correctly, if anything would happen to the Ocean Woods development, hurricane, fire, whatever, that they would have-- they would be required to rebuild as R1 rather than R2. And I don't know if that would be some kind of a difficulty because of the way the ownership of a condominium works. The second item I would like to address is-- well, first off, I'd like to express my appreciation to Mr. Dickey and his staff for trying to make some sense out of a mishmash of zoning issues. One of the things in looking at the 2019 proposed zoning and the existing zoning is the relative scarcity of R1 zoning in Cape Canaveral. I realize that there are many challenges that go along with this, as most areas are built out, and there's not much opportunity to change that. But I would like to point out one opportunity that does exist currently, and that is an undeveloped, three-acre plot of land on the west end of Oak Lane. It is currently proposed for R2 zoning, and we would like to request consideration to have that changed to R1. I have some data that is available on the Florida Department of Transportation website. North Atlantic Avenue right now currently experiences 6,900 vehicles per day down that road. As a matter of comparison, George King Boulevard and the port experiences 7,200 vehicles per day. That's also a four-lane road. So right now, North Atlantic is carrying almost as much traffic as George King Boulevard in a single day. Zoning for R2 versus R1 in rough numbers would roughly allow three times the number of units on that area as if it was zoned R1. So that would result, in our mind, an immense increase in traffic along North Atlantic, which is already heavily traffic. And also, as it currently stands, the only access to that three-acre lot is along Oak Lane. So that would result in a tremendous increase in the traffic along that area. So, and we'd also just like to point out that there is currently a house--
That's the three-minute.
That's your three minutes.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you. Alicia Spring?
I'd like to reserve my mic to speak later.
This is the time for public comment?
Okay, then I'm just with Mark.
Can you come to the podium, please, and state your name so we have this on record? We're being recorded, and we would like it to be on record.
I'm Alicia Spring. I live on Oak Lane as well and own land there and have additional-- have the same concerns that Mr. James has about the three acres at the end of Oak Lane that we're afraid would be developed out R2 and put excessive traffic on Oak Lane. Oak Lane already a very small road and a road that has now been encroached-- the right-of-way has now been encroached by a developer who was allowed to build four houses on the other side. And he put them in the wrong place, and they've encroached on that road, and so now it's even smaller. So we have real concerns about R2 being allowed at the end of that road because we don't think it'll sustain the traffic and be a hazard in our neighborhood. And we believe that there's a real need for R1 building in Cape Canaveral to make our neighborhoods nicer. Thank you.
Mr. Dickey, with their concern, is there something they need to do with your office in a request that Mr. James had, or what?
Yeah, I mean, I'm certainly aware of this issue. I've had conversations with the property owner that the folks are referring to down on the west end, who owns the three acres. And it's a-- it's an interesting balancing act. I mean, we've got a bunch of commercial property up and down, and we'll get into this a little bit more in depth here in just a second, but I just want to kind of briefly--
Right.
--frame the discussion. I mean, it's-- we've got a bunch of commercial property, and the city's proposing to, frankly, have a pretty significant downzoning and to mostly R2. And so, on one hand, we have property rights and taking issues that we have to be very concerned about as a local government, because we certainly don't want to put the city in a position where we're going to be getting sued and losing for a taking. And I'm sure the city attorney will-- there'll be some very in-depth conversations with the board next month on this issue, because it's a significant one, and it bears directly on what we're doing. So we've got property rights on one hand, the property owners, and then, on the other hand, we have property rights, if that makes sense. And we have property rights of the-- you're hearing from some of the folks tonight. And we have property owners along Oak Lane that want to maintain what they have, and they want to maintain the character of their neighborhood, and they sense that a zoning to R2 is not going to meet their goals and so-- and their long-term plans for their property. So we've got a-- it's a balancing act, and it's something that we're going to have to work very closely with on our city-- with our city attorney. But the bottom line is, R1, which we're proposing to zone the majority of the property in there is-- allows only single-family.
Okay.
R2 allows single-family and duplexes, multifamily. It allows a little more intense residential development pattern. I have spoken with the property owner at the end. He's interested in putting in some, you know, some upscale duplexes. So, you know, but if we're-- there's-- we could talk about this all night, but--
So we're talking for R2 duplexes. R3 would be condo, mid-rise condos.
R3 typically-- R2 allows, I want to say, 25 feet in height. R3 allows up to 35. So you're going to have a more vertical development pattern with R3 versus R2. And R1 is even, you know, excuse me, single-family, so--
All right.
But it's, yeah, I'm very well aware of the issue and the concerns of the property owners. And on the other hand, I'm aware of the desires of that property owner at the end and his property rights, too. So it's-- it's, you know, we felt like what we were proposing was a compromise, but obviously there's going to be further discussion on that item.
All right. Thank you, Mr. Dickey. I want to thank our speakers for speaking tonight. It's important that the board hears from our public speakers. Mr. Dickey, I believe you have a presentation for us tonight in our work session.
I do. Thank you, Madam Chairman. And I'm going to be reading from a-- is that up on the-- we don't have my memo for-- okay, we'll just go to the maps, and that's really the important thing. I'm going to be reading from a memo that I prepared, and it's available on the city website. So if any of you would like to, after the meeting, go to the city website. It's located there, and all the information that we're going to be discussing is-- the materials are there. And if you have any questions, please give me a holler anytime I'm available. And rather than bore everybody and read it verbatim, I'm just going to try to hit some of the notable items and really generate some dialogue and some discussion. And that's really from a staff perspective. That's really what we're after this evening, is I know the board's had a chance to review the materials. And I'm just really interested in your thoughts and any comments, because we're going to be-- my goal is to bring this back to the Planning and Zoning Board next month and actually hold a public hearing, which would be a noticed public hearing. So we would be sending notices out to all of the affected property owners. So I would anticipate, you know, a much greater participation, and I would anticipate a, you know, a real-- pretty robust dialogue next month at the meeting. Anyways, as most of you remember, earlier this year, we did have our-- I'll call it our neighborhood meeting. We had a meeting here in the council chambers that we did send out, let's just say, 700 notices to the affected property owners. And it was a good meeting, and we introduced the topic to the folks who were here. We discussed what, in general, what the issues were, and just really was an opportunity for folks to give us feedback. We did have some preliminary maps that we'd prepared, and we had placed throughout the room. We were contacted by probably four or five property owners who had some real concerns about what we were doing. I think in every one of those situations, we didn't realize what was going on in that property. We had them left as commercial, and we changed them to residential or vice versa after we had a chance to talk with them. So I believe, based on that meeting, we've kind of-- we've flushed most of the issues out that we're aware of. But anyways, we had that meeting in January. We had good dialogue, good discussion, and we've been refining our proposals since then, and we're here now to really-- you know, we're really getting to a point where we need to move this forward. And again, this is more of a work session, and we'll be going to the P&amp;Z and then the city council after that. But the nugget of the problem is we've got approximately 700 pieces of property in the city that are zoned commercial, where we have-- they're either vacant or they're improved with a residential structure. There may be a few outliers to that, and that's just a general statement. And the challenge with that is that those properties are considered non-conforming, because our code does not allow residential in commercial zoning districts. And the problem-- and this is similar to the problem we had with all of our non-conforming condos that we dealt with, let's just say, a year ago. Similar to that in that these non-conforming properties, residences primarily, are subject to the city code's non-conforming restrictions. And primarily, what that means is that if one of them were destroyed by any means-- we had a hurricane come through and destroyed some of these structures. If one of them burnt down, if one of them was damaged in any way beyond, you know, was considered destroyed, and that's a defined term, they would not-- potentially not be able to be rebuilt. And where that-- the problem arises, similar to the problem we-- same issue we had with the condos, is when some of these folks are trying to sell a property, when they're trying to refinance, when they're getting their property appraised, you know, we talk with the underwriters or the appraisers, and one of their questions-- standard questions is, if this house was destroyed, could it be rebuilt? And we have to-- I can't tell them yes. So obviously, that raises red flags with the underwriter or their appraiser, and then things just kind of spin out of control at that point. And as you can see from Attachment 1, which is-- you have in your packet, and Brenda's going to it right now. Those properties that are shown-- well, all of the properties that are shown in a either gray-- and let's see, what is that map? So it's gray, lime green, or kind of a neon green. Those are the properties that we're proposing to rezone. The ones in gray are the ones I'm really talking about. Those are the properties that are zoned commercial that need to be rezoned to residential, or we're proposing that they be rezoned to residential. And so that's the scale of the issue. I mean, it's not isolated in any one location of the city. I mean, I guess you could say it's along the North Atlantic Corridor, but it really runs from the north end of the city to the south end of the city. And let me talk about why that is in just a second. The lime-- I'll call it the lime green, the lighter green, are properties that are owned by the city or a public institution. And right now, they're not shown that way. They're either shown as a residential zoning or a commercial zoning. As an example, if you look at the piece right-- let me show it for the people here in the audience. That piece of property right there is the city wastewater plant. But we can see right now that it's zoned-- zoned in that kind of that orange zoning district. So it's zoned in an R-- excuse me, an R3 zoning district. Well, it's a wastewater plant. Does that make any sense, that our wastewater plant is zoned R3? No, it doesn't. And you can see also on this map, City Hall, City Parks, Cherry Down, the school. There's all kinds of public-- publicly-owned property in the city that's either zoned commercial or residential. That makes zero sense. So there are some-- I'll call those cleanups that we're going to do as part of this overall project. And you can see-- you can count the number of parcels. Let's just say there's 15 or 20 parcels that are-- that fall into that category. But the majority of property is this commercial issue that I've been describing so far this evening. Now, why? Why is this the case? And, you know, Lamar certainly, and maybe some of the others can certainly speak to this much, much more succinctly and clearly than I can, but my version of how we got here is that historically, North Atlantic has been-- was the main north-south route through the city prior to Astronaut being constructed. And that is where the city placed its commercial zoning district. And you can see-- you can see the residential zoning up and down North Atlantic. And at the time, it was appropriate, and it made sense. Well, when Astronaut was built, as we can see today, driving up and down Astronaut, all of that commercial, or a lot of that new commercial migrated over to Astronaut. And this commercial zoning became, I think I term it, either unnecessary or obsolete. So as the residential demand came in behind Astronaut, that residential demand along North Atlantic, the city's response was, well, okay, we're not going to rezone it, but we are going to allow residential uses as a special exception in commercial zoning. And so what we have is we have special exception approvals all over the place. Commercial properties with special exception approvals developed as residential. That's what we have today. That's a result of my very quick, down-and-dirty description of kind of how we got here today. And I'm sure Lamar can add some meaningful input and backfill behind my explaining that, but essentially, that's how we got here. So obviously, if we have such a large-scale issue and challenge in front of us, we needed to come up with a comprehensive fix. And that is what we started in January. And you can see on Attachment 2-- Attachment 2 is that map right there. It's this-- yeah. It's basically our current zoning map. Attachment 3 is the proposed zoning map. And so you can see that a lot of that commercial is proposed to be re-designated residential, in particular along-- in the North Atlantic Corridor. I mean, we do have some commercial development or commercial zoning that we're proposing to keep. That's either because it's, A, developed, and we don't want to pull the rug out from underneath these folks who have a developed piece of commercial property. We'd be putting them back right into the situation that our residential folks are in today. Or there's-- the second reason is there's perhaps some development slash redevelopment opportunities. In particular, let me point out the properties right there on the west side of North Atlantic along central. Betty Gould's property, the Mobile Home Park, as well as the Kurt Tzel piece on the south side. Those are nice pieces of property. High redevelopment potential, great opportunities for mixed-use development. And that is really an opportunity for a nice, nice project to go in there. So you'll see that there are a few pieces that are vacant, currently zoned commercial, vacant, that we're proposing to remain that way. Also, currently, you can see that the concept back in the day, when the city came up with their zoning map, just go in-- there was the 100 block was all zoned commercial. Well, I get the idea at the time why that was proposed, I mean, because it was North Atlantic, and that's where you would have your commercial development. As we all know, what's happened is the residential folks have moved in. Actually, we deal with it on a regular basis. People buy up some of this commercial property, and they're putting homes in. There is still quite a bit of vacant property in that 100 block, and so we have residential right next to commercial in quite a few situations. So in that-- there again, we're suggesting that we maintain that commercial zoning where it's already developed, and the rest of that go residential. Really not-- I mean, if you go back to-- can we go back to Attachment 1? Other than the public-- proposed public zonings, that's really it. I mean, it's really along North Atlantic and the public-- and the proposed public rezonings. I will say that the piece way up in the north end of the city, up in the northeast end, is part of Jetty Park. That is in the city limits. And so we needed to-- currently, it's zoned R3, which, again, makes no sense. So we're proposing that it be zoned in a Parks and Recreation zoning district. Let's see, we're also-- and this is just kind of a side note. In our comprehensive plan, we have a public recreation land use district or land use category. We do not have a conservation land use district category.
Isn't that both in our comp plan or not?
The zoning district, that's right. So what we're needing to do is we're going to be creating a conservation zoning district. We don't have that in our zoning code right now. So we'll be creating that-- we'll be creating a new zoning district. And you can see that the conservation is the-- on this map and on-- is dark green. On the map that you're looking at up here, it's the lime green. And those are proposed to be conservation, and that really limits the type of development that can go on there and the intensity and the amount. And generally, the rule of thumb that we used when we were looking at the conservation zoning districts was that due to some type of state or federal funding grant that we received, those grants typically come with strings attached, and they do limit what a piece of property can be used for if you accept those grants. So generally, if you see a dark green on the boards, on the board's attachment number three, or that lime green on that attachment that the public's looking at, that's what's happening on those pieces. And that's really about it, Madam Chairman. Again, I, you know, I'm here, I'm all ears. I'm interested in what the board has to say this evening. We will, you know, depending on what we hear this evening, depending on the scope of the discussion, I would, you know, envision coming back, you know, let's just say, a month and a half from now, the end of June, and asking the board for an official recommendation that we would take to the city council, and then we would go through that process. So this will-- this will be processed as ordinances. Anytime you amend the city comp plan or the city zoning ordinance, that is-- that's through ordinances. So that would require two readings in front of the city council. So there'll be an opportunity-- there'll be a public hearing in front of this board, potentially, next month, and there will be two public hearings in front of the city council. So we would have three noticed public hearings for the public to have an opportunity to speak to the issue. So I feel like there's going to be plenty of involvement, public involvement and opportunity. And as I said earlier, I'm available all the time to meet with people one-on-one, to talk about this, Brenda and I both. So anyways, Madam Chairman, that really concludes my presentation. I'm certainly willing to respond to any questions that there may be.
All right. That's great, and I think the public comment opportunities over the next three meetings, one here and two at the city's good. And any public who does have questions, I certainly would recommend you get with Mr. Dickey. He will certainly listen and be able to provide further information. Mr. Russell, you're the most experienced at this, I think. Do you have any comments? Start with you.
Well, I can recap the history of how we got here, but it's just history. We are where we are. If anybody's really interested in knowing how and why, I will cover it. But go ahead.
I was going to say, I am.
I think it would be beneficial, if you don't mind, giving us a brief synopsis. I think it would be beneficial, if you don't mind, giving us a brief synopsis.
Well, a long time ago, like 20 years ago or more, look at Attachment 2. Can you bring up Attachment 2 on the screen, Patsy? Okay. Now you'll see that red stretching all along North Atlantic, past the Y, and all the way up to crossing Central Boulevard and on to the port, towards the port. Years and years ago, the backside of those red blocks along A1A were residential. And the zoning board was trying to make a commercial corridor. And so the correct kind of zoning is to zone using streets or natural barriers as your border. So we proposed that, to make that block-deep corridor and zone it commercial, hoping that it would become a viable commercial district. Well, it did pretty much along A1A, south of the Y. But there were those on the council, it was a 3-2 council. We were just members of a board answering to the council, and we proposed this block-deep zoning. The council didn't want to give up their residential prerogative on the backsides of those blocks, on the offside. So the, it was a bitter debate, bitter debate. We finally compromised and said, okay, we'll zone it commercial along corridor and give a residential by special exception. And they liked that. That gave them two bites at the apple. They could have it commercial or they could have it residential. And they owned a lot of property along that area. Those, those council members owned a lot of property. And so by George, they're going to maximize their holding, and that's the way we got there. So we had residential by special exception all along that corridor. We had creeping residential land use by special exception. The developers pretty quickly discovered that residential sold better than commercial. If it's, you can sell housing a lot quicker than you can sell a commercial property. Fact. And this housing was much in demand and the area was in demand, or those areas were in demand for housing, not commercial. So you've got that creeping residential land use all up along the road. That's not a bad thing. That's just what happened. People wanted to live there in homes and, and that's what happened. Now we've got a situation that we're trying to fix. And we've got land that is zoned commercial with a lot of residential in it by special exception. And then along came legislation by the council that removed the special exception ability. And that made all those properties non-conforming. And it makes you uncomfortable if you're trying to refinance it and you find that little note against the property. And I'm not sure that it affects the insurance of the property. And in fact, I asked the city attorney at the time, Anthony, he couldn't give a definitive answer on whether or not incorrect zoning affected property insurance. He said, it depends on the individual property insurance contract. Nevertheless, you, you've got that little cloud floating around. And that's why we're here tonight, in the next few nights, to fix it. And the last time we had a hearing about this, we said, we were going to fix it. We're going to take away that cloud and make people happy in their ownership of their property and their insurance. And we're going to rezone it appropriately, and we're going to fix it. And that's what we're doing. We're going to zone the property according to what's there. If I get it, and if there's something different from that, then we need to hear that tonight. But my, my feeling is, the strategy is to, and David and the staff have examined all those properties, over 700 properties. And they are proposing to take away the commercial zoning and put in residential zoning for the appropriate properties, and leave commercial for appropriate properties. And what you're going to have is a patchwork. The, I don't know, they used to be known as the DCA in Tallahassee. What are they, what are they now, David?
They are known as the Department of Economic Opportunity, DEO.
They might have a bellyache about that, all that spot zoning. And as we said in the meeting last time, we had a big together about this. It's our town, it's our regulations, it's us who live here, and we're going to fix it so it reflects our living patterns and Tallahassee can just have a bellyache. So you're going to have some spot zoning along there, a patchwork zoning. But we're going to fix things so that people can be happy with their ownership, their zoning and their insurance. And then that, when they get a disaster, they can build it back. And that's what this is all about. I think we're okay, we're going to be all right. We, we go ahead and fix the zoning and it'll pass through Tallahassee and they can look at it and they can bellyache, and then we're going to pass it. Home rule. And that's my input.
Thank you, Mr. Russell. Mr. Pearson?
I saw a lot of that happen as well in the time I've been on the board. The, when I look towards the northern part of, of North Atlantic, it is really spotty. There's like, one, two, three, four, five, six, seven or eight just north of where the intersection is, on the eastern side, there's seven or eight commercials. And that's what we'll have.
Well, the zoning won't be in a straight line. It'll be, you're exactly right, it'll be spotty. Too bad, that's what we're going to have. And it's not that bad. It reflects how we've decided to live. Zoning trends wash through every, it takes 10 years for a zoning trend to wash through and become what it is today. Took 10 years for that to just kind of be what it is and solidify. Okay, we are where we are. There's nothing wrong with zoning it as it is, in my view. And, and make everybody's insurance reflect the zoning and, and the homeowners can be, feel safe about it. By the way, we said DCA changed to what?
Department of Economic Opportunity. And they're, they're a, they're a much kinder and gentler form of DCA. DCA back in the day were just heck on wheels.
They were hard to deal with.
They were tough. And with our different, our various governors and legislature, property rights have become a big deal and a big thing. And DCA has been defanged, or DEO has been defanged a great deal since when I started in this business 20 years ago. They're nothing what they, like they used to be, so.
Well, DCA was useful for its time, and they needed to.
I agree.
Because at the time, in 1960s and 70s.
I agree.
Our roads were, were crowded, our, we didn't have good roads, we didn't have good water. Our growth was not controlled. Somebody had to get a hold of this state and regulate its growth. And that happened under Ruben Askew and some of that string of pretty good governors. And the DCA became very powerful. But it's time, our institutions outlived their usefulness, and it's time to let up and let's be what we are. You got it exact.
Mr. Pearson, did you have anything else?
No, I see one very interesting, teensy little one. At the very entrance to Harbor Heights, on the northwest corner, as you come into Harbor Heights, there's a little piece of red, and that would be commercial. Is that just kind of a holdover from something that we all remember very well? Or is that actually going to stay commercial?
Yeah, I, I, Harry, if it's that piece that you're talking about on the east side of North Atlantic, then yeah, that was a, if you look at the current zoning map, Attachment 2.
Yeah.
You can see that there's five or six parcels that are zoned commercial on the north side of the entrance into Harbor Heights, on the east side of North Atlantic. And, you know, that, and one thing, and I'll, and I'll get to your, get to your question, I want to just take a step back, just, it's really interesting, and I, I guess I'm a history buff, but if you look back at the old zoning maps of Cape Canaveral, back from the 60s, this commercial corridor has been there since 60, since the first zoning maps, really has never changed as far as this commercial corridor here, which I find really interesting. I'm kind of fascinated by that. But, but anyways, yeah, that's, that's a holdover, Harry. That is a piece that is currently being developed. As a matter of fact, I had a meeting with their engineer today. And it's going to be zoned in an, within kind of an office use, a training office use. And that, that application was submitted to us several months ago. So for, for the city to go in there and, and, I mean, if it was a fallow piece of land and there was nothing, no interest, we'd be proposing it to go back to residential.
David, we're missing, we're just blowing, we're glancing off here. That little green parcel that he's looking at on Attachment 3? That's a, that's a natural gas business.
I think he's looking at the red, Mr. Russell.
Yeah, but there's a, there's a, some, okay.
He was, he was questioning the gray, red next to the green, I believe.
Yeah, and that green piece right north of that is the, that is a little pocket, city pocket park that I think Mr. Supernaut is working on as we speak. But yeah, the, the red that you see there, it's, it's, it's an existing convenience store, it's an existing restaurant, it's, yeah, it's all existing stuff. And that, that was why I said earlier, it'd be hard to pull the, pull the rug out from these guys if it's a, if it's, it's being used commercially.
No, no, I'm sorry.
Excuse, David, we need a, a quick sidebar.
Sure.
If you want to point out something.
That's what I'm talking about, right.
We made that residential.
Yeah.
But there is a natural gas facility right there. It's to be left alone. Otherwise, you make it non-conforming.
Is that, okay.
That little nas, natural gas facility, that little red dot, that's what we're talking to it.
Okay.
We made that residential all around it, but there's a natural gas there. And if we were to zone that residential, well, guess what? We put it right back to what we're trying to cure tonight. We'd make it non-conforming. So leave it alone. It's commercial.
And we discussed that piece of property when we did rezone.
Yeah.
The property next to it that's residential, that we weren't going all the way out to the street because of that.
Right, yeah. That's right.
All right, Mr. Price?
Well, first of all, I'd like to commend the city manager and city staff for the work that you've done on this. And I think it's pretty, a pretty good reflection of what current trends are. I would say 10 or 15 or 20 years from now, the planning and zoning board at that time will be sitting down doing exactly the same thing, taking a look at rezoning based on current trends. I think the work that you've done looks really nice, and you make our job easier. Thank you. And I'm all for what you're doing.
Yeah, Madam Chairman, could I just say one thing?
Sure.
To, to what Mr. Price just said. I've been involved, I've worked in different places where we've done this exact thing, and this is amazing to me how calmly this is going. When you start talking about rezoning people's property, especially from a commercial designation just to a residential piece, it can get just downright ugly.
We're not rezoning it after them under them, we're rezoning it right down on to them as they are.
Yes. Well, I'm, I'm just, and I just want to just make a point that I think it's, it's going very well, and I appreciate John's comments, and hopefully it continues that way. But thank you.
Thank you. Ms. Bass?
Pretty much just to echo what John said, I appreciate how clear everything is and that we can see the, the progression and that's, oh, sorry, I never talked.
Pull it closer.
Hello, everybody. Just, so yes, just again, I really appreciate the, the level of work that's gone in the, into this to make it clear, to break down each piece. And it seems like a huge mountain to climb to change 700 properties, but hopefully with all of these steps, we'll catch as many of the, the possible issues along the way. And I'm interested to see how it all develops as we move forward, hopefully with a better zoning situation for everybody. About it.
Well, the things I, I want to just ask about is more help make sure everyone understands what I think I understand. The problem seems to have begun with the expansion of the port, the loss of North Atlantic continuing on, and the building of Astronaut Boulevard. And the bottom-line effects moved most of our commercial corridor from North Atlantic to Astronaut. So as businesses began moving out and closing down, it was in the city's interest to let residential housing come in, because we certainly didn't, wouldn't want derelict buildings beginning to grow. And that's kind of how I see we got into this, which is natural progression of any city who goes to do expansion in other areas and bringing in a new major highway, that's going to feed the barrier island. Certainly advantageous to us, because we're getting all the Cocoa Beach traffic and farther south through us. The thing that would bother me about not doing this is those people who live on that property, because of ordinance 02-2016, which part of what it did was to include the elimination of the special exception provision. If those, those improvements on those properties were destroyed in any way, hurricane, fire, tree falling on them, multiple ways you can have disaster, they could not be rebuilt. And under the new ordinance, there would be no place for a special exception. When you look at what's best for our citizens, if they're living in a residential place with a special exemption and it's commercial, it makes sense as a supportive city to our residents to fix that so if something happens, they can rebuild their property. I mean, nobody wants to lose their property that they have a home on and be told, nope, now you've got to build a business or sell the property. So from that standpoint, I think this follows with what I have seen our city be, which is very residential and citizen-focused and, and trying to continuously do the right things for our people. And that makes me really excited. I'm also very pleased to see some of our, our parks and, and conservation zones becoming that. I live very close to Manatee Park, a couple of blocks away, and thinking that, you know, that could be turned into condos saddens me. It's a beautiful park, lots of citizens get it. And I would not want to live at the sewer system. I see it as I walk out of my neighborhood too. It's nice and clean, very neat, doesn't bother me being there, but wouldn't want to live on the property. I do think along the way, there probably will be people not overly happy with all of the decisions that either this board or the city makes in this. I learned a long time, you can't make I learned a long time, you can't make everyone happy. I think what's most important is we do need to listen to our citizens' concerns. If we can find a way to fix that, it's good. But I think ultimately, our job is to do what's right for the majority of our city. The documents you sent me were very clear to understand, very reading. I like the maps, so I'm finding this very useful and interesting. Want to continue studying a little more between now and the public hearing. But I'm supporting what I'm seeing here. Does any other board member have any other discussion or questions, comments?
Yes, thank you. There's just a parting comment. If you look at the zoning map, the shoreline is residential and the river line is residential. Over all these years, if we haven't done anything, we have always protected the coastline and the river shore for residential. Had a lot of people come in here and ask for a way to build high-rises and hotels on the beach. And that pressure never goes away. And it's still there. So we have protected that, those shorelines, all these years. Somebody asked me one day, "How did you do that? How did you keep the shorelines from becoming Miami Beach?" And I said, "Well, we just zoned it and we defended it." So it's just a parting comment I'd leave with you, and it's a legacy. I hope our future P&amp;Z boards will always defend those shorelines.
I think that's a very good point, Mr. Russell. Thank you. Anybody else? Mr. Dickey, do you have anything further, Chad?
No, Madam Chairman, other than just this, I think this is a real testament to how wonderful Cape Canaveral is. I mean, as Lamar mentioned, the city has changed. And we need to reflect that with our zoning map and our comprehensive plan. And it's an orderly process, or it's supposed to be, but I think it is. And it's an opportunity for everybody to speak to the issue. And it's a, I'm kind of looking forward to walking it through and getting to the goal line. But thank you very much.
You're welcome. So this is going to conclude our work session. I do want to remind the public, you'll have an opportunity with this board at our meeting in late June. I don't have the date in front of me, Patsy. Do you know the date?
The 13th, I believe.
13th of June, not late, mid-June. And then there will be two public readings before the council. So I do encourage our citizens to get out, either come to this board, city council meetings, or all three, so that your opinions can be heard. If there's nothing else, do we have any discussions or reports from the board members?
I have just one item.
Okay.
There is an agenda item that has been placed on the city council agenda for the next meeting. I think it's June, whatever the next council meeting is, June 16th, I believe, or 19th. And it deals with food vending trucks. And I know this board has dealt with this, let's just say, a year, a year and a half ago, and took a pretty strong position. But one of the members of the council is bringing this to the council as a whole as a discussion item. And so I just wanted to put that on your radar, that I don't know what will happen to it at the city council, but there's going to be further public conversation about that item. So stay tuned. I will keep this board advised as to what's going on there.
What's the underlying issue?
I just briefly read the draft agenda item. And I think the commissioner is interested, the council person, excuse me, is interested in having a conversation about the appropriateness or the viability of allowing mobile food vendors, food trucks, in the city.
Yeah, existing businesses, they pay good money for their licenses, their business licenses to serve food. And they're not going to like that.
Well, you know, I'm not going to, you know, I'm just bringing that to the attention of the board.
Be an interesting discussion.
We may or may not have a discussion on that in the future. I just wanted to just let you know, just be aware of that.
End those conversations.
Yes, we have. Yes. Thank you, Madam Chairman.
Thank you, Mr. Dickey. There's nothing else. Do I have a motion to adjourn?
Is that moved?
Second?
Second.
All in favor? Aye?
Aye.
We adjourn.